Okay. Come back and give us another design. Six months to a year.
That's what I thought was gonna happen, Dick.
Well, I realize that.
At this point, we have no alternative.
But uh, I think that's the point I was giving to.
They have no.
I don't know if we have any alternative, but maybe to put it to bid. If you put it to bid and it comes back, the ball's in their ballpark, you screwed up. You have to come back for it.
We'll come back twenty. You ready to spend twenty?
We'd better be starting to look for somebody else to give us our estimates and ask for a refund.
I was there a year and a half ago. I was a no vote on considering this, and it's just going on and on.
Well, I wasn't wrong, and I kind of agree with, let's get the job done, or go on outside and watch television or something. Quit screwing around, let's make up for mine a tax. And I'll meet tonight.
Dick, I wanna go over. I wanna go over, we've already contracted to do a ten dollar surcharge, I wanna see what the rest surcharge is gonna be.
And I agree, I'd like to look at those numbers too.
I got my calculator here.
We gotta make up for mine within two weeks.
I've got it coming out at fifteen dollars and ten cents, but I wanna go over that better. And then at the next meeting, are you ready to say so?
I'll go with that. I just don't wanna see it set here.
I am disappointed, we can't cut a hundred bucks out of that though. Chris can't do it.
I can cut a hundred dollars if I like. But I have to throw my own, yeah, I'll get rid of the plaque.
You have it.
We can do that.
Your name won't be on it.
I don't care. I don't want my name on it. I wanna lower costs.
Actually, it might be four hundred dollars, so.
You're really gonna care for years from now whether our names on that plaque or not, right?
They'll just remember the bill, you put your name on the bottom of every bill.
Alright, it's gonna, I made a motion to make it wrong, so anyhow, so. Let's move on here.
I would say.
Let's move on.
Anyone else? Okay, Andrew's report.
Hey, uh, I worked with Ron Detwiler on nature's work grant for the Mirror Lake renovation that the park board's been considering. Our R and B has been considering, and we submitted that today. I hope to get legislation ready for you guys to authorize me to go ahead. Just to back up here, ODNR was not expecting to give a grant this year. Nature Works was not going to, they weren't gonna do it this year. About three and a half weeks ago, we got an email and said, hey, we're gonna do grants this year. So we had three and a half weeks to write this grant. So I'm gonna ask permission or authorization to accept the grant and go through the paperwork at the next council meeting, which they allowed us to do that. I wonder if there's a section that says if you don't have the resolution and order by the time you get the application done, we can do that. So I'm going to suggest or recommend that at the next council meeting, we have emergency resolution of the nature works. And that'll be the next.
And the project will pay for?
The redredging of the Mirror Lake, making it deeper, and then the rock structure around it. Getting all those rocks pulled out, put back in as new, and the fountain redone.
That's our sidewalk.
I just, that's on my list here.
Your tab.
The sidewalk, the Fairfield sidewalk that we applied for earlier this year, we did not get the grant. We made it through the first couple hoops, if you will, and we just received notice since the last council meeting. We did not, we did not make it high enough, so we'll try again. Uh, let's see, at the last meeting, you mentioned that Columbia County Emergency Management recently contacted us about passing legislation to adopt the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And I did get the legislation put on there today, as I said in the council packets. There is emergency legislation on there tonight that if we pass, then I can get that to the EMA. So that's on the, they're furthering the agenda. As a reminder, Dr. Matthews has left, but September sixth from nine AM, there's a county waste district, they're hoarding electronic hazardous household waste, the entire collection, if they're on their county fairgrounds, and you can go to their website for that. In your packet, I showed you a flyer by ICE Energy. They wanna partner with us to have a community electronic and small household item recycling drive. And they've asked us to provide a spot. We're gonna allow them to do that in a full parking lot, and we do not need a man that's not gonna take anything from the city other than, we're gonna put it on our website and provide them the whole parking lot to do that. They're gonna bring a couple satellite truck loads, September nineteenth and twentieth, I'm gonna, I sent the flyers in your packet from eight AM to three PM. And they're gonna accept all those household wastes, your computers, laptops, monitors, keyboards, and things, and it's on that flyer, and it's on our website.
I'm sorry, I changed what they.
Uh, September nineteenth and twentieth, the full parking lot, the same place that we had the town cleanup at. We did it a couple of years ago, I guess, without bargaining out with us, but it was a successful dance. They had to complete some of those school stuff, so hopefully we did the same turnout for this one. On preparation for the street fair, all the departments are working to meet all the deadlines and get everything done. We did move the flower baskets to the one side, so all the vendors won't harm the flowers that are on the east side there. Uh, let's see, I spoke to Houssen Bear about the Camelot Bridge project. We're opening the bids on September fourth, and we should have recommendations on the sixteenth, the next council meeting. Uh, the street department, they've been painting a lot of road crossings and such. They also did some sidearm building, I don't know if some of you have seen that, there's some pictures, done by the storage lots, the, down by Kilners. And they've been working on a sign change outs and getting ready for street fair, put six tons of pox mix down last week. Uh, there was a crew coming in to paint our lines, it's a county program, it's a really good deal. We're getting four miles of center line done, and they're gonna be in within the next month or so, you think, Cassie?
That's why I'm here, yes.
Okay. And we're gonna be trying that Onyx Sealer out at Timberline, and basically, it's a, it's a sealer to put on the existing pavement to extend the life of it, and hopefully this works, it's kind of a new thing. Salem was using it earlier, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, pretty excited about it, it's pretty cost effective. And we hope to do that Friday morning, out there at the, on Timberline. But the company will come in and hang door windows and everything, and let everybody know that they're gonna be out there. Uh, wastewater, they ran most a mile of sewer lines here in the past, just in the past few weeks. We're getting out there and doing a lot of the drop spots. Uh, let's see, oh, for the stormwater regulations I've been talking about for some time in the management's report, I've got a draft copy, I was gonna give you guys, you can maybe come through them in the next couple of weeks. The idea is to kind of standardize our storm rags, or when you don't have any, you'd like to implement some. And the last one is of, it's an attachment, and it's talking about just the retention basins that people put in for to make sure that the owners are taking care of them. And that's all I have on here.
Questions for manager? Moving on to the bill, any questions for September second bill list? We're moving into old business, due to the length of ordinance, it's a tag, we're gonna do our title on it, so.
Second.
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes. Resolution number fourteen dash R dash four six six, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. So moved.
Second.
Any question? Ian?
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes. Resolution number fourteen dash R dash four six seven, second reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So moved.
Sonic? Any question? Ian?
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Ordinance number fourteen dash O dash two seven seven eight, second reading. Ordinance authorizing termination of a certain utility line easement in consideration of the grant of an alternative utility line easement. So moved. Second.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes. Ordinance number fourteen dash O dash two seven seven nine, second reading. An ordinance for the allowance for use of personal vehicles on city business and repealing ordinances in conflict therewith.
So moved.
Second. Question? Ian?
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes. Ordinance number fourteen dash O dash two seven eight zero, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with professional electric products company, Pepco, three seven two nine, Oakner Oaks Drive, Green, Ohio, four four two three two, for the purchase of single-phase overhead and pad mount, three-phase pad mount, and single-phase step-down distribution transformers on an as-needed basis for the city of Columbia and electric department. So moved.
Second.
Question? Ian?
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Moving on to the new business, ordinance number fourteen dash O dash two seven eight one, first reading. An ordinance enacted pursuant to section six point one three, the amended charter for the city of Columbia for the purpose of adopting by reference to twenty thirteen edition of the International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings and the twenty eleven edition of the Ohio Plumbing Code. So moved. Second.
This, Lance this afternoon, and then I talked to Bob Belli. I'm gonna vote yes on this, because the alternative is, the state would not let us do our own inspecting as well as done, but they come in with, do good things, that will cost the homeowner more when they build a house. And some of them I think are unnecessary, they're, they get probabilities, they're one in a fifty thousand this might happen, so everybody's gonna do something to prevent it, but we have no choice, 'cause if we don't do it, they'll come in and do it for us, so I'll have to vote yes for it.
Any other questions?
This is just operating a code.
Yeah.
Top of the view, new code.
What was, what are the previous?
Two thousand six and oh seven. Not yet.
Ian?
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes. I have a motion to read this next, ordinance in here, so. So moved.
Second. Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ordinance number fourteen dash R dash four six nine, emergency. The emergency resolution adopting the updated Columbia County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, helped by the Columbia County Emergency Management, EMA. So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ian?
McBean?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes. Next up, we have our new executive session slated, we have a discussion of purchasing property, and a discussion of certain personnel matters.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pliss, I also cannot write any reviews.
So moved. Did actually, before we do so, look at a few comments on that.
So moved. Here, if you didn't know, I just wanted to say, and after Ron said, yeah, it would be easy just to say, yeah, let's build that water plant the last time. But the cost per building, per monthly fee exactly is way more than it should be. And we're not sitting up here nitpicking or holding it around, odd, all it wants to fax, and we are, we go to more. No, we're getting at the least amount of cost, the best job we can get for the, anybody knows we need it, Matt knows we need it, we better do it. One more thing, the city ran Rodney uptown a lot of days, and Lance, I'm gonna give him some kudos, Rodney's some kudos. He does keep that center, today he was mowing weeds and on herbs, sweeping them by hand, cleaning up, he just does a heck of a job up there, makes me.
He does a wonderful job, and he, you know, he's got a.
Thanks, Brian.
He does, and he, he's, he doesn't need micromanage, that's for sure.
I forgot to add something, but I wanted to mention, this Thursday, September fifth, for those of you who do not know, we're holding a ribbon cutting ceremony at the Chamber of Commerce at the, at the new advanced auto parts building. It's the third, new September fifth, ten AM, so be sure to welcome if you wanna show up. And otherwise, you know, maybe stop by and welcome to the, welcome to the town. By my appearance, they've done a very, very nice job on the building and the construction, and it's certainly an asset to the community.
I think so. He saves money.
Probably a ton of money.
Probably, he insists.
Probably.
Right.
We went into the executive session last week, I suggested that we were gonna do this ice bucket challenge, and mostly had left. I wanna thank Lowell, Dick, and Lance, and also Dan afterwards, they all made contributions, and afterwards, I went outside and tipped up a bucket of ice water on me and my suit out, out front, and overall, I mean, between the five of us, we raised five hundred dollars doing that for ALS. And I just wanted to thank you guys for participating, and I put you all on the spot, right? And it was for a big cause, and we're known around here, so thanks for fighting for each other, so I thought it was good that we worked together and fought for something good. But I just wanna thank you guys for participating in that. For that, I have a motion to go into executive session, unless you guys, do you have any other comments?
So moved. Second. Ian?
Swan?
Yes.
Callan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauber?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
What was I gonna do, Dan?
Yeah.
Dan doesn't like to shoot that mark off her back.
He does.
Yes.
I think you're right there.
I'm coming. And I, I don't wanna move them all home, but I was in Lance's office Friday. And he says, the only way we're gonna cut, they're gonna cut money, they're gonna come in and say, don't do the wells and pipe. And that's all.
And then how, how much do you?
We can do that pipe by capital improvements.
How much do you?
We'll have that one. But if this plant.
Yeah, while Jesse starts buying trucks, maybe mine trucks, I solved that. We were probably salt.
We, we let's pound salt.
That's what, that's what the salt companies would tell us.
You know, the government should go after them with, 'cause it isn't costing them any more per ton to make it, so.
Mark, Mark's jersey, thank you, Mark. ODOT didn't even, we sat in a conference call, Friday we did. Thursday, right, all, all the other townships and cities and villages in the state of Iowa, through ODOT.
Do you have the ability with our trucks to haul from a barge?
Sure. We had to pretty much there.
Think about a truck.
Yeah, they were there, but it's on.
What, you haul twenty tons?
You know, you must, you must have eight.
Huh?
Eight.
On the track, on the.
We only had one ton. And when it came over.
Ten, you have.
We got sixteen on it.
Sixteen?
We were gonna justify.
What, eight, eight tons, what's gonna take a lot of ones? It might be cheaper to haul, get somebody to haul it.
Well, definitely would, and I would, if I could find salt to haul.
That's pretty much what I was saying, okay, I was saying this. I guess, from what I understood the last time, it was that, I thought it was a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's the.
No.
It is like.
Here's what we did, we put a ten dollar.
Surcharge.
Surcharge on, in anticipation, we're starting to collect that next month.
So we could get money.
So we could get money built up. It was low.
It was low.
Low.
Okay, alright, yeah, and then there was talk of maybe adding four dollars.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, with the way it is now, we don't have to add, don't put that into them.
Plus, I guess my question, since they reduced it by two million, that could potentially go down.
It would go down to fifteen, instead of we figured about twenty before.
Okay, and that two million's over the whole forty years?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Mike, Mike call you in, the one of these, okay?
Oh, okay, you gotta stay. I thought I could say that for sure, but. I don't know which one. They were all game. If we get the rack in today.
Yes.
Okay. She called, we just left, everybody just rolling out the door.
Yeah, I just told Tyler, look for, those guys are gone, look for a pickup thing.
I said I can bring somebody back that spent thousands, three hours.
So you should have picked it up, what was it?
You just throw it in the dumpster?
Used to be the health department wanted to take them and submit them for testing, and they just, they don't know how to do that anymore, so.
Yeah, they don't.
We bagged it, we double-bagged it, bagged it, then double-bagged it, bleached out, stained, wore it, euthanized, and it's awesome.
Yeah, they don't even want to bury any of them anymore, like the deer that we picked up, they don't want you putting them in the ground.
Where do you think they, where do they think it goes when they die in the woods?
That's what I mean, that's where they.
They call it freezing.
They don't want you, they don't want you to dig them up, they want you to put everything on top of the ground. Obviously. I mean, if you're in front of some people's houses or something like that, I can see, you know, the smell can be bad, but for the most part, the state doesn't pick them up hardly anymore, unless somebody falls into the lanes.
And that's some decomposants, huh?
It's not gonna.
You see them all outside of them?
I'll throw it up.
I hear something, dude.
Bad dog pickers, I'll bet. They get all bloated at first. You gotta stick them, I mean, might as well, it's gonna blow on you anyhow.
I don't feel bad about it, it's cost me forty-five hundred dollars for one of my cars at deer.
I've got two.
That's the biggest deer crash I ever had in my whole career, forty-five hundred dollars, shit.
That's a lot of money. I think my truck was like almost three, and I was still driving it, it was just cosmetic stuff.
I drove this one, you know, to the shop.
Plastic, you know, headlights, grills, bumpers.
We had at least one deer. She was driving ninety miles and a half, we. I'm a little lucky, I'm. I'm drinking myself. I'm surprised the lady boss didn't buy my comments, the commissioner was on the paper. Somebody's trying to take over the world, I ain't waiting about it. I don't think my cops are gonna let you make any decisions.
I do that every time. I just gotta be a parent, start talking like they pay.
I just go to my happy place.
Maybe you have to.
I just zone right on out, turn it out. You're gonna get a different reaction always, like, oh, shit.
Not again.
I'll just turn it out.
Remember that guy next to him, he gets me every time I see him out there.
Oh, could be where she could have talked him directly to.
Oh, wow, can't think of his name right now, the King Street, next to him. Oh, oh my god, unbelievable.
You got like the worshiper thing there, too, tough talking.
I just, um. Yeah, it is.
Scary off when they look, it would be a record.
I don't, I don't think you tend to.
We're gonna be mindful.
All I said was, I was talking to your fire. I'm not the one, but. Well, I ain't gonna head the house. You come to a decision yet on that? I mean, you're talking fifteen thousand, probably. Well, it is, but I, that's not that much, but I don't, you know, I wanna make sure we have it for salt for the rest of the. I mean, I mean, salt, then I think we should do, but. Yeah, well, there's just. I mean. I know, very dumb. Right, I mean, if you, if you, if you wanna build the salt bin, I think that's not a problem, okay? But the salt is gonna be another problem, but luckily, and we, you know, hopefully it'll give some bad snows early, you have enough salt to get you through till next year. I'm very fond of that, yes.
But it doesn't help anything if the prices are still gonna be a hundred bucks a ton.
That's what they're gonna be.
And, and in fact, it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to come out of capital. Cause that's, that highway, that state highway fund, and that's what we use for salt. Uh, they just can't take it. You know, they're gonna, well, I should.
Twenty, twenty-three thousand.
No, we get money monthly. But it only brings in.
What brings in, if you're gonna touch and bring in, uh, oil lot, I mean, I'll give you that here.
How many times?
Before you start out, I don't think I started out, I'm sure you had a report here. Yes, I had it filled up over a couple of years. I had it filled up. Or we buy it salt from. We didn't buy it out of. We were using a lot more salt, but it was cheaper.
Well, it did, the price was hard cheaper. So, so when the price was cheaper, it was probably enough to cover what was coming in, to cover the cost of salt. And remember that one woman, it was pretty loud, a couple of years ago, so you might, these guys probably advise her. So, but, you know, the fund built up.
Why? The only good thing is we're not, if we're, we're not under contract right now, so that would be kind of high F Y S P. It's like, I'll be able to point on half the volume six hundred ton.
Right.
Price is gonna be around a hundred bucks, three thousand for that.
They just probably will, I mean, Columbia County came in one and seven.
I'll tell you, you know, he knows I'm gonna be cheap. I don't know how somebody will time it. Um, townships. They can, they can make.